This meeting is being held as a virtual meeting with no one physically present at the board's regular meeting location in the Bone Student Center. As included in the notice of this meeting, the university has provided a YouTube link that allows all interested persons to contemporaneously view the meeting and hear all discussion and roll call votes. Accommodations have been made for presenters and persons wishing to make public comment to participate in the meeting via Zoom. Trustee Lauterback, will you call the roll?
Trustee Bone?
Present.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Here.
Trustee Donahue?
Present.
Trustee Jones?
Present.
Trustee Lauterback, President. Trustee Navarro?
Present.
Trustee Rossmark? Trustee Turner?
Here.
Madam Chairperson, we have a forum.
Uh, just to like to note for the record that trustee Rossmark is absent. She has a prior work commitment. And per our governing document, she is allowable to be, um, to be absent as a result of that. Um, thank you trustee Lauterback. I ask that each trustee confirm that they can hear me, the other trustees, and all discussion. Trustee Bone?
Yes, I can.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yes, I can.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes, I can hear you.
Trustee Turner?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. If at any point during the meeting, you're having difficulty hearing any other trustee or any discussion, please let me know immediately. Also pursuant to the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, all votes taken at today's meeting will be roll call votes. Each board member's vote on each issue will be identified and recorded. Um, you have before you the agenda for today's meeting. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Navarro was?
I have a motion by trustee Bone and a second by trustee Navarro. Okay, um, think, oh, so trustees, please answer with a yes or no after your name is called. Trustee Lauterback, please proceed with the calling of the roll for the vote.
Trustee Bone?
Yes.
Trustee Dobbsky?
Yes.
Trustee Donahue?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Rossmark? Trustee Turner? The yes, the agenda is approved.
Thank you trustee Lauterback. Next on the agenda is public comments. In accordance with policy, the Board of Trustees will allow up to thirty minutes in total for public comments and questions during a public meeting. An individual speaker is permitted five minutes for his or her presentation. If more than one person wishes to speak on a single item, it is recommended that they choose one or more persons to speak for them. The Board of Trustees will accept copies of the speakers' presentations, questions, and other relevant written materials. If you have any written materials you want to share with the trustees, you may send them to B O T at I L S T U dot E D U. Again, that's B O T at I L S T U E D U. When appropriate, the Board of Trustees will provide a response to the speaker's questions within a reasonable amount of time. Today, we have six people who have signed up for public comment. We thank you all for your patience and waiting for us to get our technology, um, all synced and going properly. At this time, I invite Matt Quinones, um, one of our parents of an ISU student to unmute and proceed with your comments to the board. Please, all speakers, keep in mind that we need to limit comments to five minutes for each speaker.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes. We can, you sir.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for allowing me the opportunity to speak, uh, the Board of Trustees and all of the faculty. I appreciate everyone taking their time to hear my concern. Um, I am a parent of a student at the university. She is a junior. And if anyone, I sent an email on Monday to the Office of the President, relents the concern I had, uh, concerning the dismissal of my daughter from an R A position. Um, to make the long story short, my daughter, we dropped her off with the other R As in certain first. She had to quarantine for certain sort of protocols as applied by the university. She did so for forty-eight hours. Upon completion of her negative test, she stepped out of her room, where she came in contact with one of her fellow R As and engaged in some contact for about fifteen to twenty minutes. Now, her fellow R A classmate had not yet received the results of his test. Um, and on Monday, I believe this test came back positive. So what they chose to do at that point was to notify their supervisor. The supervisor then escalated that up the chain of command. Now, here's where it gets mind-blowing. My daughter at that point was notified that night by her supervisor that her and her fellow classmate were going to be terminated from their position as R As due to the violation of the quarantine protocol. Then they were rehired back to the position, then they were terminated from the position. Then they were told that if they accept the termination, they could appeal the termination. However, that appeal most likely declined and therefore offered the chance to resign. Now, my overall issue has been with the inconsistency of the testing policy as applied by the university. And I understand that every R A C A faculty member was required to quarantine and to make sure that they are in compliance with the mandates as applied. However, it has come to my attention during conversations with staff and supervisors that there were plenty of faculty and R As that were not with this protocol. Now, my daughter was an R A at H U and from my understanding, there was and a lot of timeframe of fifteen minutes during the quarantine period. I don't know if that to be factual. I don't know if that applies to every dormitory. All I know is that in my conversations with several people, that was relayed to me. Now, the issue at hand here is that once this young man, his name is Xavier, tested positive and was ultimately dismissed from his position, he was given three days to move out. He was terminated on a Thursday officially. He moved out on a Sunday during moving while he was positive, when under state law, he should have been quarantined for fourteen days. He was not afforded that. My daughter, who was in contact with this man, should have been quarantined for fourteen days. She also had to move on Sunday. My wife and I drove down to the university to move them out. So you have two people moving out, one sitting on a positive test, interacting with other students and parents who are moving in, suffering the indignation and embarrassment of having all their colleagues watch the university's response up to this point has been nil. They offered nothing to these people, not to my daughter, no housing, no quarantine. The young man in question is scrambling now as we speak to find suitable housing. My daughter has the, the, the luxury that she still lives at home, so we were able to go get her. This young man is still on campus looking for something and has thus far received no assistance from the university. Now, the university, I understand, has gone through a great deal and has put forth the best policies possible. However, when we were there, we saw no testing, we saw no contact trace. There was nothing. So from my understanding, the university applied no testing but mandates to the remainder of the student body. Now, if you're not allowing or requiring the student body to be tested before they come to school, how can you hold these kids, even though they're staff, to the same mandate or to a different mandate? That, that doesn't make sense to me. So when I sent a message to the Office of the President, I got a response back from a Mr. Johnson. I'm not sure if he's on this call. However, in his, to make a long story short, his response to me was, we appreciate their honesty and we wish them good luck in the future, even though their honesty didn't get them the required result. I'm sorry, but that's just not a suitable answer because it did not address the issues that I want for.
Thank you, Mr. Quinones. Um, as you know, I'm sorry, we have to limit comments to five minutes. If you have materials again that you want to ensure that the Board of Trustees receives, um, I gave that email address and we can certainly provide it for you again, but we thank you for taking your time this evening. Thank you for your patience for waiting for us to get the line available. And I certainly hope if you have any correspondence, you send it on to us. Thank you, sir. Um, the next person we have is Fusen Ackman, our faculty member in mathematics.
Hello. Uh, Madam Chair, trustees, President Deeds, good evening. I'm Fusen Ackman from the math department. I'm very glad that ISU will be de-densifying the campus and getting serious about testing. This is a big step for our community. However, big disasters magnify the worst inequalities. They force us to rethink our neighbors and fellow citizens' welfare. ISU also needs to rethink its core values. Case one, rethink student blaming and shaming. Our students are being coerced to click on a COVID nineteen waiver to access ISU portals. They are not liable for getting sick here on campus, which should have, which should have been safe. We cannot put the social and financial blame on them. Case two, you've just heard from the dad of one of the two R As I'm going to talk about. Uh, they were forced to resign because they told the truth about violating a few minutes of the arbitrary COVID nineteen rules that apply only to student workers. Um, the whole story is on the ISU Parents Facebook if you want to read the dad's correspondence. Now, the female student was lucky enough to be able to go home. The male student, after testing positive, was put out on the sidewalk to fend for himself. He's an upright guy in a cybersecurity major, so if somebody has a job for him, he'll take it. I'm calling on housing to rethink these selective, cruel, and punitive policies. They don't work. Try harm reduction, scientific and effective. Imagine what people will do now when they get sick. They'll show up for work out of fear. Case three, W G L T says there was a COVID nineteen case in a residential hall. Which hall would that be? This is a state university, subject to the Federal Clari Act and is responsible for making timely announcements of public safety. That's why we get emails for rapes or robberies with time and location from ISU police. What's happening now is a liability as well as careless disregard for our safety on campus. Case four, even the N C A A has relented and said athletes will not lose their eligibility if they don't play. Why are ours being forced to practice on campus? Case five, unfortunately, Milner Library is going to be open full-time in the fall. Nobody, not even U I U C with their own testing, is opening library buildings. This is the exact opposite of de-densifying campus. It's going to result in clusters of infections among our students and our library staff who are fully capable of serving ISU online and curbside. Instructors can reserve e-textbooks for their classes. What happens to the fifty people rule? Or is the library going to be open only for fifty people at a time, including staff, for a dozen students? Please rethink our values. Why is this so important? Today, we got an uplifting email from our provost. But when we look at the numbers of undergraduates that are going to be potential on campus, it amounts to about eighty percent of Harvard's and ninety percent of Johns Hopkins's undergraduate populations. These two universities thought these numbers were unacceptable, uh, to bring on campus. So opening the library, I don't think so. Finally, I believe true patriotism or allegiance to an institution is shown by speaking up when something is wrong, not by saying, I'm okay, so everybody is okay. So that what is wrong can be corrected for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, next we have Carrie Anna Cortad, um, a faculty member in special education.
Thank you. Good evening, President Deeds, Chairperson Jones, and the Board of Trustees. My name is Dr. Carrie Anna Cortad. Um, I'm also here to convey some, uh, grave injustices that I have witnessed this week um, that I feel are in, uh, being implemented unnecessarily by our institution. Um, I feel like during this pandemic, it's as if our university has completely forgotten its core values and it makes me deeply sad. Last Thursday, August sixth, two R As were forced to resign. As the parent here clearly stated, first they were fired, then rehired, and then they were told they had a choice to resign or be fired. They were told that they could choose to be fired, but they, if they chose to be fired, they could try to appeal the firing. But the person who was doing the firing would also be the P, person reading the appeal and would reject the appeal. This to me sounds like a gross injustice of due process. The infraction of these two R As was that they were in the same room together for about eighteen to nineteen minutes as opposed to the permissible fifteen minutes to look at shelves. They made a mistake. Afterwards, the mistake, after the mistake was made, they reported the infraction of the three to four minutes beyond the allotted time to their supervisor because they were acting ethically. Then, when one of the R As tested positive for COVID nineteen, this whole charade of being fired or resigning occurred, which is not ethical nor equitable, especially when there are other students and R As not being held to the same standard. I often tell my students, it's not the mistake, it's how we fix the mistake that counts. I have had supervisors make mistakes. I have made mistakes myself. And during the pandemic, I'm sure that we can all agree that we have all made our fair share of mistakes. But when you force a R A to move out on a Sunday, four days later, even though one has tested positive, three days after students are moving into housing, this is a huge mistake. Isabella, in her second year as an R A, is lucky to have a family home for her to return to. However, Xavier does not. Starting his senior year, the third as an R A, he was left without room and a, and board, a stipend. He does not own a car and has no permanent residence to return to. I noticed in the news story, it was reported, we just don't know where he went. He's no longer on campus. No, he's no longer on campus housing. However, he was denied quarantine housing because he was told he resigned. This university, who brags of their values, took two first-generation students of color and forced them out of room and board and a stipend for a minor infraction. They never left the building. ISU is not requiring front desk workers to get tested, nor the students moving in. Residential life kicked out a student during a pandemic. Don't we have a moral obligation as, as caretakers of students? Where are our core values? We have a duty to uphold our values, even more so during a pandemic. The punishment that these two R As suffered does not fit the crime. Isabella took a second test and it has since come back negative. It is time for residential life to fix the mistake they have made. It is my understanding that Isabella would like to be reinstated as an R A. Xavier has found a friend to drive him to the Interstate Center to get tested, and he waits for those results. He has no desire to return to his previous job, as he told me, it has left a bad taste in his mouth. But now he will face a possible financial shortfall due to ISU forgetting our values and making a huge mistake. Where have our values gone? Where is our common sense? Did they also die with this pandemic? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next we have Dawn Bechner, a faculty member from, um, Criminal Justice Science.
Thank you. My name is Dawn Bechner. I'm professor in criminal justice sciences. I'm also a core faculty member in the Women's Gender and Sexuality Studies Program. As someone who's been on our campus for almost two decades, I consider ISU to be my home. I've amassed many experiences throughout my tenure that make me proud of ISU. And what our university is doing during these unprecedented times is no exception. I want to speak about some experiences I've had as a professor and a graduate coordinator. I'll then share a story about my students' experiences. So as a faculty member, in May, our department chairperson, Dr. Brent Teasdale, sent an email out to each of the criminal justice faculty explaining the plans for the modified reopening and listed the courses to which we were assigned. He requested that we respond with our preferred mode of delivery for these courses. Do we want to teach face-to-face, hybrid, asynchronous, or synchronous online? He asked that we give a rationale for change notes of delivery that we provided, indicating specifically how we would meet our student learning objectives using the alternative mode of delivery. Because he and Dean Todd McLeod of Cass supported my request at that time, I was not adversely affected in July because my courses were already slated to be delivered online. Um, as terms of my experience as a graduate coordinator, in July, when the Trump administration announced changes to the Immigration and Customs Enforcement rules requiring international students at fully online institutions to return to their home countries, I worked with both the graduate school staff and my chairperson to pivot and find at least one face-to-face course for each of our international students, so they would be safe from deportation. In a matter of days, our campus developed a plan to adapt to the pending changes, this time not due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, but instead to the changing immigration policies. Fortunately, the immigration rules were later rescinded and we didn't have to implement those proposed course schedules. Consistent with my experiences as a faculty member, when I reflect on my experience as a graduate coordinator, I was again supported in the process and guided to do what was best for the students. And that's who I'll close with, um, today. When, when I think about my privilege as a faculty member, I recognize that my family and my economic needs are going to be met even if the pandemic continues. But for students, the pandemic has enhanced several of their vulnerabilities. For some of our students, the pandemic has brought housing or food insecurity and other financial crises. Although I guided several undergraduate and graduate students to seek our ISU-based COVID relief funds, I want to focus on one of my international students' experiences in particular. The six months of the pandemic are among the worst days of her life. Not only was she in fear of deportation, but because of the pandemic, she wasn't able to find employment. She was afraid that she would be evicted from her apartment and she relied on the school street food pantry for all of her groceries. Amid these experiences, her father, who happened to be the family's sole financial supporter, passed away. And because of the pandemic, the airport in her home country was closed, preventing her from returning home to pay her last respects. In the midst of this crisis, the student and I contacted ISU's Persistence Committee, the Graduate School, International Studies, and collectively, I'm pleased to report that those three groups were able to pay the student's summer rent, the university fees, and provide her with money to pay her bills and get some groceries. When she thinks back on this tragic time of her life, she will never forget how we supported her here at ISU. In closing, during the pandemic, I've talked to colleagues from the universities across the United States and many in other different countries. Although all of us have experienced frustrations and challenges in the pandemic, I have yet to talk to someone who's received the kind of support that I and my students have received. This collection of experiences has confirmed my pride in ISU, and I thank you for this opportunity to share my story.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Chris Merrill, who's faculty in Technology.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak at today's meeting. My name is Chris Merrill and I'm a professor in the Department of Technology. Starting my twentieth year at ISU and twenty-eighth as an educator. Maybe more importantly, I'm a nineteen ninety-two graduate of ISU in industrial technology education. So to say I'm Redbird Proud would be appropriate. I want to thank each trustee and administrator at ISU for their efforts to plan and deliver this upcoming school year. I want each of you to know that I believe in your efforts. It becomes clear to me each day that we as a society are trying to control the situation and the virus is a situation, but it's not controllable. Rather, each of us must do the best we can to continue to teach, learn, and conduct research. I have no doubt in my mind that every potential scenario and solution for ISU has been discussed. Solutions that have everyone's best interest placed at the center. Since June the eighth of this year, through a federal grant that I lead, my team and I have delivered close to thirty professional teaching and learning sessions to help Illinois teachers and school career counselors with approaches to teaching and learning during the coronavirus. What we have learned is that there are a lot of solutions that can be implemented. And that as a state and a country, we must never relinquish that we are the world's inventors and innovators. If there was a magic solution for the ISU community, we would have implemented it. So would other universities. So would have other colleges. Equally important, because I saw Larry Lyons on here, we'd have football. And I love college football. So sorry, a little biased on sports there. I've chosen to teach face-to-face this fall because it's the right thing to do for my students. Other faculty have chosen other modalities to, uh, uh, teach their students. There's no right or wrong approach, or rather, we need to, we need to do the best we can for our clients. And our clients are our students. We need to maintain our inventive and innovative nature. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I sign off every class the same way, so I'm gonna sign off on this one the same way. Have a great day, Redbirds.
Thank you. Next we have Jeff Helms from Biological Sciences.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's opportunity or the, my opportunity to speak to the board, uh, today. Um, I hear many of the things that are going on, the various things that have arisen on our campus, the number of changes that have taken place and been necessitated. And I just wanted to express today my frustrations, not with the board or with administration, but with other entities on campus. I find that people like myself, I, I, I am a Redbird, um, but I also currently am the, uh, I instruct in our Micro One Sixty, the micro class that we use for nurses. I am the coordinator of our B S E One Oh One class, and I am also the pre-health professions advisor. So I interact with lots and lots of students. But I have an A P appointment and part of that A P appointment includes an essential teaching component. And that essential teaching component falls under my A P appointment, not under N T T. And therefore, I continue to struggle to find a place to be heard. I know there aren't very many of us who fall into this particular category, but when information is being conveyed to the board or to other members of our campus community that seem to represent all faculty, but really only represent those with a narrow definition of faculty and not truly everyone with a teaching responsibility or those responsible for the educational experience of a large number of students, is important for us to be heard. I feel the administration has made good decisions and provided direction based on science, the input of many working groups, and those working groups did, in many cases, include faculty members as well as other stakeholders. The information from these groups has been appropriately disseminated in a variety of ways and feedback, um, sought from other avenues. Faculty members on those working groups, chairs, directors, and deans have shared information and sought opinions throughout the process. Further, there have been town hall-style meetings from the provost's office where information was passed along and input sought. The results of these interactions are evident in the absentee policy, the upcoming webinar on keeping our community safe, as well as faculty's choices in how they are going to present their classes. President Deeds continues to update and lead the campus community as changes brought about by the ever-changing landscape of the pandemic have been necessitated. As changes brought about by the ever-changing landscape of the pandemic have been necessitated. The recent push to reevaluate teaching modalities to help further de-densify campus after unforeseen changes in access to testing equipment. And the resolution before the board this evening to fund testing are examples of this leadership. I want to thank the administration for all of this, not only as an AP member, but also as a parent of an ISU student. I know many of my colleagues, faculty, staff, and administrative understand that we all have a role in making sure our students have the best educational experience possible while keeping them as safe as we can. I hope others will examine the situation and realize that as part of the ISU community, we all play a role and have a stake in the success of the upcoming semester. Our role is not just to point out potential problems, but to help solve those perceived challenges as well. Only as we continue to work together, listening to all voices, can we get through these challenging times. I appreciate your time and your attention and wish you all good health. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am dispensing, uh, that concludes our public comments for today. And we thank everyone who took time out, uh, this early evening to, uh, present to the board. I'm dispensing with my comments today so we can get right to the reason for this special meeting. Resolution twenty twenty dot eight twenty-seven, COVID nineteen testing authorization. President Deets, please proceed with the resolution.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all the board members for being available on relatively short notice for this meeting. And again, my apologies for the delay in the start of the meeting. Let me begin by saying that being able to test students with COVID nineteen symptoms, um, symptomatic in Student Health Services and to conduct surveillance testing on students not currently suffering COVID nineteen-like symptoms or asymptomatic testing has been a part of our plans for the fall semester from the beginning. Surveillance testing is used to detect transmission, uh, hotspots, or characterize other disease trends. The COVID nineteen testing and contact tracing, uh, work group of our Emergency Operations Center has been developing and revising plans throughout the summer. The availability of widespread testing has been a significant issue. As the work group, uh, made inquiries with vendors who conduct COVID nineteen testing. And has hampered our efforts to move forward with a testing program. Until two weeks ago, we believed that we, uh, would be able to complete symptomatic testing on campus. And we're seeking a vendor to provide surveillance testing. As you know, the Department of Health and Human Services redirected our order for machines and reagents to conduct the symptomatic testing in the Student Health Services area. It is our understanding the machines and reagents were sent to areas with outbreaks. Uh, we do not question the decision to redirect equipment and supplies to areas with a greater need. But we were left with a significant void in our testing plans. Like many decisions made in response to COVID nineteen, the information changes day to day, and we must be able to pivot quickly. We've been able to, uh, secure an agreement with, uh, Redditus Laboratories to process COVID nineteen tests for symptomatic students conducted in the Student Health Services. That agreement for, uh, testing symptomatic students did not require Board of Trustee approval. But before moving to the resolution, I also want to address information in the media concerning the saliva testing program to detect COVID nineteen at the University of Illinois. I've had discussions with President Colleen, as a matter of fact, at three o'clock this afternoon. The presidents and chancellors of all the public universities, uh, were updated by the University of Illinois about the saliva test developed by scientists at the University of Illinois. And we expressed our interest in using the test at Illinois State University. Director of Student Health Services, Dr. Christine Nolte, has had extensive discussions with persons at the University of Illinois about using the saliva test. Unfortunately, the tests are not ready to be distributed to other universities. And we need to be able to conduct testing of our students at the start of the semester. We will continue discussions with the University of Illinois. And hope that saliva testing will be available to us sometime in the fall semester. It also needs to, uh, be approved by the Federal Drug Administration, and they are pursuing that now, but that has not occurred yet. So with that, I'd like to now move into the resolution, Resolution Twenty Twenty Oh Eight Slash Twenty Seven, COVID nineteen testing authorization. Illinois State University has an immediate need for services to, to conduct surveillance testing for COVID nineteen among our students, faculty, and staff during the fall semester. As students return to campus, it is critical that the university be able to conduct surveillance, uh, testing to protect the health and well-being of the campus community. University anticipates conducting, uh, conducting a proper, approximately fifteen hundred tests per week for the fall semester. Testing will be completed at on-campus locations. In, the university issued a request for quotes or an RFQ to conduct COVID nineteen testing on campus. The responses to the RFQ were evaluated, and a vendor identified, uh, who, uh, meets the university's testing needs. Redditus Laboratories of Pekin was identified as the vendor that met the necessary qualifications and the criteria. They operate the COVID nineteen testing site at the Interstate Center for the State of Illinois and McLean County Public Health Department. Redditus also conducts COVID nineteen testing for Illinois State University Athletics to qualify athletes for participation in team practices and events. And will be processing symptomatic testing for the Student Health Services under a recent agreement. This resolution seeks authorization to execute a five-month contract with a cost not to exceed three point three million dollars for surveillance testing for students. The cost estimate is based on an estimated fifteen hundred tests per week at a hundred and ten dollars per test over the contract period which will end December thirty-one of twenty twenty. The exact number of tests conducted each week will vary based upon the prevalence of COVID nineteen in the campus population and potential urge, uh, surges on campus. The contract will permit the university to end the agreement without penalty should changes occur during the semester that would no longer require testing. The funding source is general revenue funds. The university plans to apply for federal and state grants to help support this effort and offset the costs, and I ask for your approval for this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Deets. Um, can I have a motion and a second for this resolution?
Trustee Donahue, I move.
I have a motion by trustee Donahue and a second by trustee, uh, Navarro. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, Julie, uh, Bob Dobsky, um, again, uh, talking to Dr. Deets, uh, the other day about this. Uh, it was mentioned that it's, it doesn't have to be all used, it's just gonna be up to the end of December. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We, we only pay for the tests that are used, and we're not sure how many will be used. I would be surprised if we're at the, uh, maximum mark on that, but, uh, uh, given our planning, we thought it was prudent to go ahead and, uh, uh, put that maximum mark, uh, out there at the, uh, which represents roughly, uh, thirty thousand tests over the course of the fall semester.
And, and just to, to verify, it's only for the students, not the faculty, administration, anything, just to be used for students, correct?
Yes, faculty and staff has, have other avenues, including, uh, uh, the Interstate Center, uh, that, that would serve their needs.
Okay.
Any, do we have any other questions, any further discussion from any of the trustees? Um, I have a question, Dr. Deets. Um, what about insurance coverage for these tests for the students? Since they, full-time students have student health insurance.
You know, the, uh, insurance has not been billed, and there's not a plan to bill. Um, most insurance companies have really, uh, shied away from, uh, paying for the cost of these tests. And the students are already paying a, a student health fee. And, uh, we would be concerned that if we, uh, began to, uh, charge that plan, that the premiums would go up, uh, fairly dramatically. So, uh, we are not planning to bill, uh, the insurance company for the cost of the tests.
Uh, thank you for that clarification, Dr. Deets. Do we have any further discussion from any of the trustees, any questions, concerns? Assuming there is no additional discussion, trustee Lauterback, please proceed with calling the roll for the vote.
Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobsky.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Ross Marks. Trustee Turner.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Deets. Thank you, trustee Lauterback. Uh, to all the trustees, thank you so much for your time this afternoon or this evening, early evening. Seeing that there is no further business today, I would now ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Bone.
I have a motion and a second, a mo- motion by trustee Lauterback and a second by trustee Bone. Um, I don't, uh, tr- thank you, trustee Lauterback. Please proceed with calling the roll for the vote.
Trustee Bone.
Yes.
Trustee Dobsky.
Yes.
Trustee Donahue.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Lauterback, yes. Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Ross Marks. Trustee Jones. The motion passes.
Uh, trustee Turner.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Turner, I apologize.
No, I know.
It's okay.
You couldn't have enough of me, Mary. If you had to call me again, thanks. Motion passed, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Again, I appreciate you all taking
Good evening.
For the call. Have a good evening.